Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone here today in the Commissioners Auditorium on this first day of October and the people out in the county watching. If our Commissioners will do our roll call, please. And I think we need to have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hammond. And we haven't heard from Commissioner Johnson, so we'll wait on him. Okay, let's vote on that, please. Okay. Yeah. No, I didn't take. There we go. Okay. Mr. James, would you do our invocation? And Mr. Smith, would you do the pledge, please?
Stand, please. For the heaven and gracious Father, we thank thee for this opportunity that we have to come together and to carry on the business of Pitt County. We ask the richest blessings upon each and every one, Father. We ask thee to bless those who are here and those who are not. And oh, heaven and father, we thank thee for all the blessings in which they are bestowed upon us each day. We ask thee to be with each Commissioner, give them the knowledge and the wisdom to make the right decisions. We ask this in thy holy name. Amen.
Raise the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve your agenda.
Second, needed.
We've got a motion and a second. And we'll now vote. I know it's kind of confusing. Um...
June.
Okay, our first item on our agenda is a public hearing. Mr. Rhodes, how are you this morning?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. We have a public hearing this morning, only one for your attention. It deals with our 2012 Community Development Block Grant. Wanted to take you through and remind you of where we've been with this program. You might recall that we just closed out our 2009 program back earlier this year. This program is specifically for home assistance, actually going in making repairs or replacement housing for low-income households. And of course, we've served about nine households with our last grant program. And you can see some of the before and after shots. And a lot of times what we're going in to do, these are homes that typically have either folks with disabilities or they're elderly. And you can see we have grab bars that we put into the bathrooms and also the shower areas have grab bars and just some general rehab work throughout the home to make it a safer environment for the folks that are living there. This time, this cycle is coming through. The funding is actually being reduced. Last time we had about $400,000. This time, we're looking at about $225,000. And our needs also, this particular public hearing you'll be holding today is for public participation, kind of let you know what is the primary needs out in our community. We've been assessing that through a number of years. We hold an annual meeting with folks that have called our office during the year. And we, this year, held it in August, and we had about 40 households represented there. So we've got a waiting list that we pretty much continue rolling from year to year based on our needs out in the community. It's color-coded because we have a lot of different programs that we pull from to try to assist these households. Well, we've recognized since our funding for the home program with the city of Greenville went away about three years ago, there is a need for replacement housing. And these are homes that we basically need to go in and demolish the existing ones and install new homes. And we've had success with that, typically on the same lot in some areas throughout the county, if that's a possibility. And we see that as a need now since we've kind of been having homes that we weren't able to go in and repair. We need to fully replace those. So with that, you'll be hearing more about this particular application at your next public hearing, at your next meeting on October 15th. But that just kind of sets the groundwork for today, letting you know what some of the needs are, what our intentions are for this. So today, hold our first public hearing to solicit public input. And the next time, when we come back in two weeks, it will be to approve the grant application. And the application deadline is on the 17th of this month. With that, Madam Chair, our recommendation after you hold the public hearing is to authorize staff to proceed with preparing the application and also scheduling your second public hearing in two weeks.
Okay, we will declare the public hearing opened on this issue. Do we have anybody signed up?
Not this time, Madam Chairman.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that didn't get here in time to sign up that would like to speak to this? Okay, then I'll declare the public hearing closed, and I'll hear from any of the Commissioners.
Boo will authorize staff to do this.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, let's vote, please. Pass. Thank you, Mr. Rhodes.
Thanks to you.
And the next item, our Employee Service Awards. And we'll go forward. Ms. Hardy, if you'll come forward, and Mr. Elliott and I'll come down. Our manager will do the names, and we'll wait till after the end of each one of the years of service to applaud. We welcome all of you.
Well, this morning, as we do on a quarterly basis, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners are going to recognize the service awards for accounting employees. And it's always a pleasure to do this because, as I state every time repeatedly, but it does need to be stated, that it does show the long tenure and dedication of the workforce to the citizens of Pitt County and to our organization. We're going to be recognizing five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 30-year employees today. So we're going the full spectrum from the beginning of five years all the way up to 30. So to call your name, we can't hold applause, as Chairman Ward said, maybe until the end of each category. And we'll start with the five-year recognitions this morning first. First, we have Janet Acklin with Pitt Area Transit. Paul M. Andrews, Jr., otherwise known as PJ, Soil and Water. Joyce Askew, Social Services. Kendrick Burden, Social Services. Billy Shannon Cruz, Detention Center. Kimberly Diggins, Public Health. Douglas Edwards, Buildings and Grounds, couldn't make it this morning. Susan Hardison, Public Health. Congratulations. Burgundy Heinz Smith, Pitt Area Transit. Corliss Jenkins, Public Health. Karen Johnson, Social Services. Melissa Larson, Sheriff's Office, not able to attend this morning. Carolyn Redman, Pitt Area Transit. William T. Reeves, Pitt Area Transit. And our last five-year recognition and could not attend this morning is to James Ruffin, Pitt Area Transit. We're going to round of applause. Moving to tenure category, and we have almost as many 10-years as we do five-years. Johnny Barnhill, Animal Control. Tyler Bryan, Sheriff's Office. Leanne Gaber Wisman, Detention Center.
Did we get close?
Yvonne Garris, Sheriff's Office. Oscar Howard, Jr., Emergency Services. Nikisha McKinley, Social Services. Melanie Perry, Detention Center. Ralph Porter, Jr., Emergency Services. John Reed, Public Health, couldn't make it this morning. Raymond T. Revella, Tax Administration. Get another picture, pose for her. Paul Sands, Detention Center. Michelle R. Whaley, Animal Control. Leon Wilkins, Detention Center. Francine Winstead, I'm sorry, Leon Wilkins. Okay.
Is this it?
And our last tenure is to Francine Winstead, Tax Administration. Go pose, head it in. Yeah, picture, pose. All right, we have five employees with a 15-year recognition. If Deborah Clark, Public Health, if she's here, will come forward, please. Scotty McKinley, MIS, Management Information Systems. Congratulations, Scotty. David Mills, Detention Center. Marshall Vines, Sheriff's Office, could not make it this morning. And our last 15-year recognition, employee of Human Resources, Patrina Vines. Okay, 20-year recognitions. Our first one is to Helen Bryant, in the Emergency Management. Oh, yes, and the 20 years, we remind everybody, they are awarded with a watch as part of Congratulations. You can both watch your watches at the same time for 30 years to click on. Stephen Cannon, Steve Cannon, Solid Waste. And our last 20 years to Mary Shelton in the Sheriff's Office. All right, we have two names for 25 years. Karen Enos with the Register of Deeds. And our second 25-year recognition is to Willie Freeman, MIS, Management Information Systems. Couldn't attend, okay? This morning, we have one 30-year recognition. This is to a public health employee whose name is Deborah J. Morgan, otherwise known as Joe Morgan.
We have a reception in the back for our employees and everyone else who is here. And if we'll just let our employees who we are honoring go first through these doors and then everyone else may join them. And we'll exit this way. And thank you so much for coming and being here today. Welcome back after our recess for our reception. Our next item, our public addresses to the board, and we have a couple of people signed up.
Yes, Madam Chairman, two people signed up. If you'll come to the podium, as I call your name, give us your address. First, we have Nancy Colville.
Madam Chair, as we say before every public address, Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address prior to speaking, and all comments should be informative and constructive. Inappropriate comments, including profanity or personal attacks, will not be tolerated.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Colville, I reside in Greenville, and my address is on file. And this morning, I want to address the attendant and closed session at the ABC Board. I was there at the last meeting, and I do have some concerns, and I feel like I need to make you aware of it. Commissioner McLaurin was absent, and at the end of the meeting, I asked if his absence was excused, and I was told no. And then I asked if there was an attendance policy for the board. And the chairman said no, and Ms. Campbell said, "Not really." And I thought that was rather strange. So afterwards, I called Ms. Campbell and asked for the attendance record of Commissioner McLaurin. And she informed me that it has been pulled, so I asked for the dates. And Commissioner McLaurin was absentee, excused three, not excused three, and present five times, and they meet 11 times. That, then I came to the county and I asked for the policy, for the attendance, and asked if the ABC Board fell under this policy, attendance policy. And of course, I was given a copy of it, and they do. And that concerns me because every year, the chair is to report to the clerk to the board, the absences, if they exceed a certain number, which clearly Commissioner McLaurin did. But to do that, if they don't, then the clerk doesn't call them. So unless somebody like me goes over there and sits and asks questions, a person can be not going at all, getting $50 a month. Because I asked Ms. Campbell if, when you're absent, you get paid, and you do, you don't get the mileage for going from home to that, to the office, which they get paid every three months, 55 cents. But this, to me, is a concern because this is a board that has a lot of responsibility. Now, the other thing, then after that, I went and read the minutes for the last 20 months, and I noticed that Commissioner Minjes voted, I think, seven times to go into closed session, never said for what, never said anything when he came out. This is no way to conduct a board. If we are going to allow this, then I suggest that you take this and tear it up because it's not fair. You need to treat everybody alike. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colville. Next person?
Next, we have Keith Cooper.
Good morning. Keith Cooper, Greenville. According to the Bureau of Justice Statistics, between 1976 and 2011, there were 279,384 black murder victims. It's estimated that 94% of those victims involve another black. Using that 94% figure, that means 262,621 were murdered by other blacks. Further, 7,000 black folks are murdered each year. In Greenville, according to the Greenville PD, there were 12 homicides between 2011 and July 2012. Seven involved both black victims and black offenders. It is time we stop blaming other folks for our problems, and as Michael Jackson would say, "Look at the man in the mirror." We have an obligation to be our brother's keeper, take back our neighborhoods, monitor the activities of our children, and ask for God's guidance. The Good Book reminds us that you have not because you ask not. We must collaborate with various organizations and groups, including churches, businesses, governmental entities, and other nonprofits to eradicate violence in our most vulnerable neighborhoods and communities. Wouldn't it be great to return to those glorious days where an elderly lady could sit on her porch at night and enjoy cool breeze and a slice of watermelon without being bothered by intruders or gunshots whizzing by her home? There are an estimated 300 million guns in the United States. Too many of them are in the wrong hands. Therefore, the Benevolence Corps proposes the following five-point plan as solutions to the problem of gun violence. Number one, partnerships for the prevention of violent crimes. Two, community involvement initiative. Three, handgun buyback program. I talked with Commissioner Webb, McLaurin, Commissioner Mc...all those about this, so you're very familiar with what we're doing here. Number four, Effective Community Policing Project. And number five, the Lot Set Not Project. We talk about that in more detail later. Last but not least, as we embark upon the difficult journeys ahead, let's remember the admonition of Apostle Paul in Ephesians 6, where he urged us to put on the whole armor of God, that you may be able to stand against the wiles of the devil. Folks, we are in a war against the forces of evil. If we allow God to be our hedge of protection, as provided for in Psalms 91, we will win this war and proudly display the bloodstained banner of victory. Finally, I want to invite all of you to our October 6th Stop Black Unblack Violence March, Unity March, October 6th at 12:00 noon, starting at the West Greenville Gym. We're going to march downtown City Hall. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, ma'am, unless there's anybody else in the audience.
Anyone else in the audience that failed to sign up? Okay, we'll go now to our items for report. Manager, Scott Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. A few items to report on. Your next meeting dates will be in October, October 15th at 6:00 PM, and then the first Monday in November, November 5th at 9:00 AM. Just wanted to announce to the board and public that the Pitt County Agricultural Fair begins today, being October 6th, October 1st, and runs through October 6th. Item C is an item that the Emergency Management Department has applied for a $4,825 grant from the Firehouse Sub-Safety Foundation grant. And this will be to purchase PPEs, personal protective equipment, for some of the EMS squads. There's no match on that. Item D, I know this is very public, and it's been in the newspaper, and there's a press release on it, but did ask Duane Holder, Duane Stand, to come release on it, but did ask Duane Holder, Duane Stand, to come today and just to...
Just to come over here, so we can make sure and get a picture of you. You don't have to give us a speech today, Duane.
Mr. Holder will be beginning on Monday, October the 8th, a week from today, as the county's Finance Director and Deputy County Manager. Just wanted to recognize him, and that he has been hired for this position. And also, at the same time, I would like to thank Chris McDaniel for his time, tenure as the interim Finance Director in the Finance Department, and holding the fort together and the county together in interim. And thank Chris, and look forward to Duane starting on the 8th.
Thank you very much. And you can say a few words if you want to.
I'd just like to thank the board, Mr. Elliott, for the opportunity. I am looking forward to the challenges, and I do look at the challenges as opportunities going forward. I feel very fortunate to have been selected from such, at least what the newspaper reported, a talented pool of applicants. And I look at coming into this position with integrity. I do understand the importance of earning the public's trust, particularly in dealing with their money. And I'm, again, just grateful for the opportunity. Melanie Bryan actually formed a great team in financial services, and I'm honored to be selected as captain of that team going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Duane, and welcome back to Pitt County.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Item E, wanted to report on Pitt County's United Way Campaign. We wrapped up our campaign last week. We had a goal of $23,000, and we've met that through all of our activities, fundraising efforts with our workforce, everything from voluntary giving to a basket raffle, to a cake auction, to a number of activities. So we are proud to say that we have met our goal this year under the Early Bird Campaign. Did have two other items real quickly. One deals with the solid waste convenience sites. A concern had been expressed about one of the sites in terms of the conditions of the paving. We've had... John Demery's gone and is doing an entire analysis of all the sites, and will be looking at, releasing a paving package on a few of those, and probably phasing those out to have the repairs made to the sites, as well as letting the board be aware of that. The other item, the last item, deals with this year's budget. The Finance Department has published two things. One is the annual budget booklet, which I believe the board got a copy, received a copy of this in your agenda package. This is the A-through-Z document about Pitt County government. This is the user-friendly version that has the charts and the graphs and the pictures and the easy-to-understand information about a $200 million-plus budget as this operates for Pitt County. We have line item detail, which is a document that is a companion document to this that's just full of numbers. This document is full of numbers, but this document is also full of graphs and charts that makes it easy for the average citizen to know what we fund, how we fund it, how we balance the budget, and so forth. And the companion document to this is what we call the Budget in Brief. This has now been published. This takes this larger document and condenses it down to a brochure that if a board member is going to a community group and would like to present what county government is about, we have these available. You can take out, and you can pass these out to, you know, whether it's a Kiwanis Club or Rotary, or whoever you may be speaking to. So both those documents are now, have been published, and I'd like to thank Financial Services for getting those out. And that's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. Our next item, Chris McDaniel. And Chris, while you're coming up, I will reiterate on behalf of the board thanking you for letting us have a smooth transition as our interim finance officer. Thank you for all you've done.
Madam Chair, another good news item for Pitt County. America's Promise Alliance has awarded Pitt County on September 12th another award. More than 300 communities participated in going for this grant award. This is the fourth time that Pitt County has been awarded this designation. It's a $2,500 grant. We received it back in 2008, 2010, and 2011, and also 2012. This grant, we were going to split between the dropout prevention program and the Twilight Academy, 50-50. The dropout prevention program was started in 2009, and it has reduced the dropout rate by 37%. Also, the Twilight Academy is in each high school in the county, and it meets after school from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And the students that enroll in this program is to help them meet their graduation goal. And this started in 2010, and it has improved the graduation rate by 1.58%. So a good item for Pitt County.
Thank you very much.
Motion to accept the designation and adopt the proclamation.
Thank you. And for voting on that, please. We got a second. We have our tax administration here. Can you give your report, please?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Today Raymond Revill and I have a short PowerPoint presentation for you on Pitt County collections. The Tax Administration Mission Statement is to list, map, and assess property and to bill and collect all ad valorem taxes in Pitt County, thereby ensuring all citizens are provided a fair and equitable ad valorem property tax process by administering the laws governing the process with integrity and professionalism, while instilling the highest degree of public confidence by providing prompt, accurate, and courteous service. This is the picture of the actual tax collection office, and the assessor's office is adjacent to the tax collector's office. The next slide just provides the importance of ad valorem taxes, as it provides 50% of Pitt County's budgeted funding. Taxes collected and licenses issued by the tax collector office are ad valorem property taxes, occupancy taxes, gross receipt taxes, fire district taxes, EMS rescue, and privileged licenses. Fees collected by the tax collector office are landfill fees, drainage district fees, fees and costs associated with enforcement measures used to collect delinquent taxes. This next slide is just indicating the municipalities in Pitt County. And there are five municipalities in Pitt County that we collect their property taxes on real and personal, as well as their registered motor vehicles. That includes Bethel, Fogland, Grimesland, Simpson, and Greenville. We have five others that we only collect their registered motor vehicle taxes for them. That is Aiden, Farmville, Fountain, Griffin, and Winterfield.
This next slide talks about the quantity of funds that's brought in, and for the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, the county taxes, fees, interest, and costs was about 85, excuse me, 84.66 million. The total amount that we collect, including for the county municipalities and districts, was just over 122 million. And we give you a comparison shot there. That's about 11 years ago, the county tax figure was only 42.1 million. We went to 400. Technical difficulties.
Use the keyboard rather than the...
We won't use the keyboard.
Which is slide 11.
Right there. It is?
Sorry for that, Madam Chairman.
That's okay. I totally understand when it comes to technology.
The next slide here is just showing the due dates, and for non-motor vehicle taxes, these are taxes that are billed annually. Their due date is September 1st, and we offer a discount if it's paid before that date, and they become delinquent on the following January 6th. Okay, for registered motor vehicles... These are registered motor vehicles are billed three months following the date of registration or renewal, and they become due the first day of the fourth month following the date of registration, and become past due on the first day of the fifth month following registration. Our next slide is talking about where and how the taxpayers can pay their taxes. Initially, by mail. There's another shot of our building and shows the PO box. You can just mail them. We do include an envelope with the bills, so they can do that. In person, you can come to our location at 111 South Washington Street. It's at the corner of Second and South Washington. It's one block directly from the courthouse. And this is a shot. We've got some smiling staff waiting on some taxpayers here that are in line to pay their taxes. And this is a shot of our drive-up window. We can provide so people don't have time to come in the building, they can come to the drive-up window. And also, at the corner of the shot there, there's also our after-hours deposit. We do offer that secure night drop box, and it's just past the drive-up windows that can be used at times that we're closed. We're all for payments by credit card. This is through a company called Official Payments Corporation. This is done by the phone or on the internet. And the various payment methods that we receive payment of taxes include cash, money awards, certified check, such as a cashier's check, personal or business check, as I just mentioned, the credit card payments. And their escrow account payments, a lot of mortgage companies send in a payment on behalf of their customers. Now, we're going to talk about the various enforcement methods that the statutes allow us to use to go ahead and bring in the delinquent taxes. The first one starting off is garnishment and attachment. This is where we go after wages or salaries, deposit bank accounts, rents or lease payments. Next program is the North Carolina Debt Setoff Program, and this would, you really consider this our mass program, because we submit all delinquent bills to that program. It tries to match up income tax refunds and winnings from the educational lottery. We also have a method of blocking registration at DMV. If you don't pay your taxes on your vehicle, you get blocked. You can't renew your registration until you come see us and pay that tax bill. Annually, we come before the board and ask for permission to advertise the names. This is another method. We advertise the names of property owners and unpaid taxes on real property that occurs in the Daily Reflector each March. There's an additional program called levy, and this is where we actually seize personal property for sale at auction. We have the assistance of the Sheriff's Department to do this, and types of things, listed their vehicles, airplanes, business equipment, sometimes boats and campers. The primary additional program is foreclosure on real property. There's two types, in-rim foreclosure and mortgage style. This next slide just sums up what we did during the last fiscal year in terms of the number. The gross total there was 11,613 enforcement actions, and wage garnishments was the primary one at 77%. Bank attachments was just at 19%. Sheriff's levies was just a little bit below 4%.
After all other methods of collection available to the tax collector are exhausted, the property is placed in the foreclosure program. Criteria used to determine foreclosure action are large balance due, multiple delinquent years, poor payment history, and absent heirs or unknown owners. In-rim method is a fairly simple and inexpensive means of foreclosure. The land is being proceeded against rather than the landowner. All actions are taken in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 105-375, and the standard fees associated with in-rim foreclosure are listed below. For a summary, of July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, the total number of new parcels assigned was 266. Parcels paid after receiving certified letters but prior to judgment is 127. Parcels paid after judgment but before execution are 10. Parcels paid after execution but before sale is finalized, 24. And actual parcels sold at auction and not redeemed by taxpayer were only nine out of 266. Since in-rim foreclosure takes approximately nine months from start to finish, the status of particular foreclosure actions can overlap one fiscal year to the other. So there's actually a nine-month period even after foreclosure has begun for the taxpayer to redeem their property. The total monies collected from July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012 were $666,510.51. There are several different ways in which you can check to see if you owe taxes. On the internet, Pitt County's website features a current listing of outstanding taxes due, and you go to the website, choose online programs, and then choose tax accounts, balance paid, and balance due. You can contact our office at Washington Street. You can come in person. You can call on the phone. We assist multiple different ways. North Carolina General Statute 105-348 provides that all North Carolina property owners are charged with notice that they must list their property for taxes and pay the taxes. Otherwise, enforcement measures may be taken against the property. Each year, we encourage the employees, and we try to think of ways to work more efficiently. And we have a list of processes that we use to try to make us more efficient. We have barcoding on our tax bills, and we have dual computer monitors in the office. We have a remote deposit capture, which the payments received by Pitt County are scanned to an electronic image and then transmitted to the bank. We have installed an ATM inside of the office for use for the taxpayers. And we have public access terminals inside the office where taxpayers can look up their information on there, and we can assist them with that. And we, lastly, we have staff performance goals, which we encourage them to help us find out how we can do our work smarter, faster, and better. And our last slide here is the remote capture process, and it also has our drive-up window and our night deposit on there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I think that would be beneficial just for all the citizens to...
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Credit card payment for ad valorem taxes in Pitt County, is that a big, big thing, or is it just a convenience for the... Approximately, how many people pay their taxes by credit card?
Do we have a figure on that?
We can look it up and get it in.
We can look that figure up and give you, but...
I'm not interested in that. My main issue is this.
A lot of people do take advantage of it.
All right. The county does not get the net amount of taxes that's due when you use a credit card. Is that a proper statement?
Well, what we use is an outside vendor, because we are required by statute to collect the taxes, no more, no less. So this outside vendor will prompt the person using... It's called official payments, and they will prompt the person using this service, and it will tell them along the way what their fee is, and they have to accept the fee to proceed with the payment.
So the county's getting the proper amount of money back then?
Only the tax.
The fee involved is against the card user?
That's correct.
That was my question.
Okay, good question.
But there is a significant amount of people who utilize it.
Good convenience.
Okay, Mr. James?
How much is that fee?
It's a progressive. I think the minimum that it starts with is $3, and it goes up according to the amount.
About 2%.
About 2%.
It goes up according to the amount.
That's about what it is on most credit card uses, right? And that is? I don't think it's any higher.
We consistently stay in contact with the different vendors to make sure we have the lowest-priced vendor.
That's good.
Good. Thank you very much.
Motion to approve items for consent.
Motion to approve items for consent.
Thank you again. Okay, we're voting on our items for consent. Mr. James? Thank you. Okay, our next item is, not Jack, no, Lee, if you will come forward, please, and explain to us about the approval of the purchase for the CPR Training Aid Unit Kits.
Morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Yes, Jack was shown as presenter, but since this is kind of an oversight committee, I'm the liaison, I'm bringing it forward. But I do have Jack here and also have Rick also here, two instrumental people in looking for these training aids.
Move with the oversight.
Your recommendation.
Any questions, any comments? Okay, let's vote. This is a very important educational piece for all of our emergency service people in the county and I think that's very good.
And I think also, one other point just to make with that, it's not just for the first responder community, but could be actually utilized in the community for actual individual systems.
Right, so even towns or whatever municipalities could use that-
Yes, ma'am.
-to train their people. Thank you very much. And you're up again.
Thank you. Again, seems like we had a large portion of the decisions today. On September 13th, the EMS Oversight Committee reviewed proposals for two ambulance remounts. This is in keeping with the fleet management program that you adopted back, I think, two years ago. Anyway, it's keeping that where it says two remounts and a new ambulance. This is for the two remounts. RFPs were released and received back. They were reviewed by county staff and reviewed by the Oversight Committee. And the three proposals that came back ranged from right at $177,000 for two, down to about $160,000 and 3/4. And the reason that the $160,000 was there, one of the ambulance remounts, there were some things that had been done to one of them that the local vendor was able to note that certain things did not have to be done with the remounts. So from that, the Oversight Committee is recommending the approval of the two remounts from the local vendor that's been presented to you Select Customs. And I think Jamie is here also if you have any questions of the vendor. And we're asking that you approve this in an amount of $160,747.
Some move, Madam.
Okay, let's vote. And this is, as you stated, goes right along with what our plan was.
Yes, ma'am, and it has already been budgeted.
Okey-dokey, thank you. And Ms. Gallagher and Ms. Lee?
Yes, this next item, the General Assembly in its last long session or short session approved changes to the state's emergency management ordinance. It consolidated all the laws with regard to emergency management and it changed some of the language and terminology. The changes at the state level required us to review and look at our ordinance at the local level and minor revisions do need to be made in order for our ordinance to remain in compliance with the state law. They are not substantive changes. In other words, we had previously in our local ordinance called it a proclamation for a state of emergency. The state now wants us to call it a declaration. Only the governor issues proclamations for this type of thing and the local governments are to issue declarations. So we changed that terminology. It also clarified that we have to have a specific document that ends our state of emergency and that was in our practice but not in our ordinance. And so we've updated that. It also changes the criminal penalty for violation of the ordinance. It had been a Class III misdemeanor and now is a Class II misdemeanor if a citizen fails to comply with the requirements in a declaration of a state of emergency. So I have worked with Noel Lee to go through our existing ordinance line by line to make it compatible with the current state law. It's now in your agenda package and we'd ask that you approve it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, and we now have, are you doing, Alan's?
Yes, ma'am, I think that goes by.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
Move with Bert Smith to replace Kevin Craft.
Let's vote, please. This is for the Fire District Commission-
Yes, ma'am.
-and our Pitt County representative. And Mr. Smith, if you'll hit confirm again. So we got, okay, that passes. And our next item is a closed session, Madam Attorney.
I wanted to say something before we do any close session.
Okay.
Only really, I don't generally make a comment pertaining to someone coming up speaking, but pertaining to the ABC Board, we want that, Madam Attorney, gotten straight. First place, county commissions are paid, correct me if I'm wrong, $200 for travel. I didn't realize that we're getting traveled for anything else because I don't get traveled and I go all the way to Winston to meetings and other places. So I would like to have a report pertaining to what goes on. I didn't realize this and I believe that we, as county commissions, have the responsibility to do that which is right in all meetings. So I want a report brought back to this Board pertaining to the ABC Board and its meeting policies and so forth. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Mr. Manager and Madam Attorney. Thank you. So we will go into closed session and, Madam Attorney, if you'll take us into closed session, please.
Yes, it's been suggested that this Board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 and also 143-318.11A1. A3 being to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body and under sub-1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state and the United States and not considered public record.
Okay, thank you.
I'll take that if you have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we'll vote to go into closed session. And the resolution for the Black on Black ballot that we did has been signed and voted on in the consent agenda. So it's been accepted by us and now the public knows. So do you have a copy of it? Okay.
Right, thanks.
Okey-dokey, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept our minutes.
Madam Chairman, I motion that we accept the, or approve the content only of the May 1, 2012 closed session.
Second.
21st.
Okay. And let's vote on that, please. Okay, thank you. And our next item of business is commission comments. Ms. Owens?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Tammon?
No, ma'am.
No, ma'am.
No comment.
Madam Chair, the new Amtrak 3way service to Greenville will begin service to the public on Wednesday and I think that's a good thing for the citizens of Pitt County.
For the shuttle bus to take them to Rocky Mount.
Get them there.
Okey-dokey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just want to report that my next ride along with our county department will be with the sanitation department on October 9th. I've talked to John Demery and I'm going to suit up and get out there and get working with them and see what they do out there as I continue that project on.
And remind us again of that date because I'd like to go out.
October 9th.
Okay, thank you.
Watch me work.
Okay, thank you very much. A motion to adjourn.
Some move.
And let's vote, please. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And let's.